I'll call to order the September twenty-fourth Planning Commission meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilty.
Here.
Vice Chair Hasty.
Here.
Commissioner Gregor.
Here.
Commissioner Heikman.
Here.
Commissioner Legere, excused.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, we'll start with the presentation of the Commission Handbook.
All right, great. Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. This is a presentation of the newly adopted Commission Handbook. We've always had a Commission Handbook in the city of Los Alamos, but it has not been updated for many, many years. So we just updated it and at the last month, the most recent council meeting, council has adopted it. So I'll let it go over it with you. Again, it was emailed to you separately from our City Clerk's Office. It's embedded in the report today, but I'm gonna just fly through this. So again, if you have questions, please stop me and as usual, please, okay? So the first, some of the introduction, some of the pages is the history of Los Alamos, right? And what the manual is for. So the manual is to assist commissioners in performing their duties. It includes standards adopted by the City Council, again, at the most recent council meeting, which is August eighteen, twenty twenty-five. Commissioners are vital to the city's organizations and its effort to meet the community needs and interests. Okay, so then the next several pages is some history of Los Alamos. I think, if you're not aware, we were incorporated March first, nineteen sixty. We are a charter city. We are governed by a five-member city council that are elected and staggered. And again, keep going. Part of that here, again, is the Los Alamos organizational structure. We have the City Manager, Admin Services Department. The City Manager oversees the entire city. As you can see, I know it's small, right? Again, we have people top City Council. Then it folds out into the different one City Managers. You can see the City Attorneys are over there too, right? That's my whole, right, in his office. Development Services, so we have basically four departments. We have Administrative Services, Development Services, Police, and Recreation Community Services. The City Manager oversees the Admin Department, which includes the City Clerk's Office, Finance, and Human Resource. Police Department, of course, their department head is the Chief of Police, Michael Claiborne. Recreation Community Services Department is, their director is Evelyn Noda. And Development Services, I lead the Development Services Department. That's one of my duties as Assistant City Manager, okay? So again, that's a much more detailed structure of our city charter. Each department has different divisions, right? As you can tell there, and you know, we have people like Tom, division is Planning. So he leads the Planning Division, for instance, okay? Right. Commission members, as you are aware, are advisory bodies. They are appointed to and serve at the pleasure of the City Council. In advisory capacity, provide citizen input and recommendation. They advise and make recommendations to the City Council. But the City Council has the final responsibility for all policy decisions. Of course, as you are aware, the Planning Commission also serves as a decision-making body per state law, okay? Composition, the composition composed of the following numbers. Parks, Recreation, Culture, Art has five. Personnel Appeals Commission has five. Planning Commission has five. And Traffic Commission has five. We basically, we recently made this change to five. We used to have a seven to five. And so you'll see today, like for instance, the Traffic Commission has seven members. But a lot of them, their terms are up at the end of the year. And so that's where we're gonna transition to the five members, okay? Regular scheduled meetings. The Commission conducts regular scheduled meetings once per month unless noted below. And this is a change from our prior one. We will be ending all future Planning Commission and any other meeting, Commission meeting at six P M. So because today, well, we had a notice for a public hearing and we listed at seven o'clock. We kept it at seven o'clock as a gendize. But from here forward, it will be at six P M. And there's a schedule, you can see up there. Parks, Recreation, Culture, Art will meet the first Wednesday of even months. Traffic Commission will be the second Wednesday of the month. Planning Commission is the fourth Wednesday of the month. Personnel Appeals Commission is as needed. And I also wanna note that we can always call a special meeting, especially if it's Parks and Recreation, meet on even month, if needed. Okay, how do you become a Commissioner? Again, only registered voters residing in City Los Alamos are eligible for appointment. Our City Clerk's Office oversees the appointment process and maintaining a roster of all employees' terms. All members shall be appointed to a term of three years, the exception of members of the Personnel Appeals Commission, which is four, four years, attendance and removal. Absence from two consecutive meetings or from one-third of the total of the regular scheduled meetings during any calendar year shall be deemed to constitute the resignation of such members and the position shall automatically become vacant, all right? So again, I think that is something of note there. Members of the Commission shall serve at the will and pleasure of the City Council. This is something that is of note as well. Therefore, they may at any time be removed from office with or without cause by the majority vote of the City Council whenever it is, whenever it is in its discretion. The best interest of the city shall be served thereby. Okay, any questions so far? Again, please stop me, I'm going by this really fast compensation. Members of the Commission are volunteers. They will be served without any compensation. The only compensation is according to L A M C Chapter two dot three zero dot zero eight zero. All members of all Commissions will be provided by the city a ten thousand dollar group life insurance policy while appointed to the Commission, right? And if you're not aware of that or you need more information, please contact the City Clerk's Office. Okay. When a Commission addresses the City Council in a public meeting, it shall be made clear whether the member is speaking on behalf of the advisory body or as an individual citizen, right? So City Council's undue influence on Commission, okay? Council members shall not attempt to coerce or influence Commission members in making appointments, awarding contracts, selecting consultants, processing development applications, or granting city licenses or permits. The City Council shall not attempt to change or interfere with the operating policies and practices of any city department, okay? We've had some instances in several of our Commission that a council member reached out to a Commissioner directly, right? And that's okay, but again, you have to understand that we are the staff. And so if you do get that, if it's a city-related item, you should forward that to your city, your staff liaison. So for Planning Commission, that's either me or Irving, okay, all right? Relationship with city staff, right? The city staff works for and is responsible to the City Manager and/or his designated. So we all work for the City Manager, okay? But there's a point where like we have a chain of command, right? And so like for instance, Irving reports to me, right? Tom reports to Irving, so we have a chain of command, right? And so let's say, Tom, I'm using example because no one is ever mad at Tom. Let's say you're not happy with Tom's work performance, okay, right? You can't, you know, go to Irving because he reports to Irving. But ultimately, you have the option of going to the City Manager directly as well, okay? The Commission should have the authority to utilize the services of the city staff from time to time, as long as the services rendered are within the city's adopted budget. Members shall not ask staff to commit staff resources for work that has not been budgeted or has not been approved by the City Council. Any concerns or the behavior work of a city employee should be directed to the City Manager, again, privately or as we need to ensure the concerns are resolved and investigated completely and ethically, okay? Right, relationship with the public, right? You are appointed as Commissioners, and so relationship with the public is very important. Members should conduct themselves at public meetings in a manner that is fair and best represents the city of Los Alamos. Members should be considerate of all interests, attitudes, and difference of opinion. They should also take care to observe the parents as well as the principle of impartiality. The relationship with other Commissioners, okay? Always respect other individuals' viewpoints, even though they may be the opposite of yours. Allow other individuals to articulate their views and then attempt to make an objective evaluation of those views. Evaluate Commission Member's viewpoint based on what is best for the total community. Commissioner's members must be open and honest at all times. And each member has the responsibility to recognize the members and to see that they are made, welcomed, and become oriented and trained, okay? Relationship with public, again, you are appointed, so you represent the city. You are encouraged to seek out, become aware of a public opinion relating to their field of influence. U S Commissioners should welcome citizen input at meetings and ensure that the rules and procedures for these public hearings are clearly understood, okay? Again, in the packet, there's a lot of bullet points, right? And so I'm not gonna go over them, but you know, be respectful, be honest, blah, blah, blah. Again, there's a lot of bullet points. Again, I do not go over every single one. Designated staff, right? So designated staff serves as staff liaison and are secretaries to each Commission. So I put it here like Parks, Recreation, Culture, Art Commission. Theirs Department Liaison is Recreation Community Services, okay? Personnel Appeals Commission is the City Manager or the Admin Services Department. We in Development Services has the luxury to have both the Planning and the Traffic Commission, okay? So as Commissioners, you have every right to email, and I'll get to this later on in this presentation, a staff liaison like Irving, and say you have a traffic question, right? It just happens, no, I'm gonna use Parks and Recreation, that's a different department, right? We will then reach out to the department head over there to solicit that response. And either they will convey it to Irving to convey it to you or we will just have the department head convey it to you directly. Okay, so that's an example, okay? Knowing the designated staff of each department. Brown Act, right? So this is a really, really general Brown Act. I don't know if our City Attorney wants to chime in, but the Brown Act is a state law requiring open meetings. The law requires that the meeting's agenda be posted seventy-two hours in advance and that no changes can be made after that time. The law also requires that meetings at which a quorum of the members is in attendance must be open to the public. So typically, our process here is we will push out the agenda Thursday, the Thursday before the meeting, which is today, Wednesday, but sometimes we are late. The Department Secretary Gabriella gets really upset at me for trying to push it out late. But we do have the option of, I just wanna make sure that we do, we can push it out on a Friday because it meets a seventy-two hour minimum. Again, guys, a very general Brown Act law. There's much more to it. Again, I or the City Attorneys here, if you have any questions on that, okay? Public testimony at meetings must be allowed at a meeting as long as testimony applies in meetings and all that stuff. The one that I wanna point out here is the Commission can regulate the length of testimony. So I think that is something different than prior. We also added in a new policy, limited printing policy in support of environmental sustainability, cost reduction, and operational efficiency of the city. I mean, operational efficiency of the city emphasizes limited printing policy. So that means that we will provide, if you have questions or you want some sort of backup documentation, digital tools and resources, that's what we try to utilize best, okay? But if you do want something printed, we do have a page limit of two pages, front and back, okay? All right, so communication with staff, right? Communication members, Commission members are encouraged to contact their liaison directly. Again, for the Planning Commission, it's either the Development Service Manager Montenegro or myself directly to ask questions, request clarification, or request information. A Commission Member shall not direct any staff to initiate any action, change a course of action, or prepare any report that is significant, nor shall a member initiate any projects or study without the approval of the majority of a quorum of the Commission, okay? So basically, what I would like to say that is you're allowed to ask any questions to us, right? Especially if it pertains to planning items. But again, you know, run it through Irving, all right? And then we will go seek that answer and we will try to provide that answer as best we can, okay? So again, a request for information is here in the policy that all requests should be made to the City Liaison. And I'm skipping here. The department head and then who will forward the request with appropriate departments. So again, I mentioned earlier, if you can ask questions about other stuff, or if you have a question about recreation, you have a question about P D. But we're not P D, so we have to go to P D to get that answer, right? So we will contact the department head. So I'm using example, P D, that's the Chief of Police. And the Chief of Police will consider the amount of time and resources required to compile the requested information and advise the member. So he will either reach out to you directly or go through us, because we're the staff liaison, within twelve working days, okay? And anticipated delivery dates are subject to change at the department head's direction. So I'll give you an example. We added a Commissioner on another body that asked for some information about traffic accidents, right? And so we reached out to P D and said, P D, we got twelve working days. For us, that's three weeks. They came back and said, we need a little bit more time. So then we communicated with that Commissioner that we need a little bit more time. That Commissioner was okay with it. And then when that timeframe came, we did supply them the information that they requested. Undue influences on staff, you know, this is something that the Planning Commission would not dare do, right? That's a joke, that's a joke. Commission members shall not attempt to coerce or influence staff in making appointments, awarding contracts, selecting consultant, processing development application, granting city license or permit, or assigning tasks or, and/or moving of task timelines. Commission shall not attempt to change or interfere with the operating policies and practices of any city department. And I believe that is it, right? Again, that is just a very, very cursory. The last pages of the packet actually goes into each Commission and what they are, what their scope of duties is. Like Parks, Recreation, of course, that's Personnels. I don't know if you want me to read. The Planning Commission shall have the power and the duty, provided the statutes of California local ordinances, okay? And then, of course, they have a little bit of information about the Traffic Commission as well, okay? So this includes the brief summary of the Commission Handbook. Again, it was recently adopted by our City Council. We are here for any questions or if we have any comments. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to oral communications. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to come up and speak on an item that's not on the agenda, seeing nobody, we'll.
Did we have one question?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry.
So I just wanted to clarify, so when we have an open, when you have a quorum, you have to have an open meeting. So I know that we try not to get more than three of us together to have a little chat or something when we're not in a meeting. How does that work with other Commissioners? It doesn't matter, right? As long as it's not, like, I'm just saying, three Planning Commissioners chit-chatting about something. As long as we're not talking about planning, what about other Commissioners? Does that, does that come into play at all? Or council member, or?
In that case, it would not come into play if you're not discussing sort of items that are within some sort of shared purview or jurisdiction. There, there could be an exception to that rule. For example, if there was some sort of committee that was appointed that was composed of members of various Commissions that had some sort of continuing jurisdiction or specified task to work through, that could become a Brown Act body for, for all intents and purposes of the law. But in terms of, let's say, two Commissioners run into a traffic Commissioner on Pine Street and just start kinda talking shop or just talking about things, and that's not a Brown Act meeting.
Okay. I just think, you know, because it's always a good practice, you know, not to, just so, because no one knows what you're talking about. So it's just best to only have, you know, two of you at a time or whatever. Okay, good, that's good clarification. Thank you for the report.
All right, seeing nobody for oral communications, we'll close that. We'll move on to the consent calendar, the approval of the August twenty-seven minutes. Do we have a motion or any changes?
Yeah, I have a couple of corrections. The first is page two of five. There are two clerical corrections. It's page thirty-two of sixty-one of the packet, page two of five of the minutes. So in the second paragraph, Chair Quilty inquired, the name of the business there is Play, again, Sports?
That was played, so just correction of.
Business name.
Remove the E D.
And then towards the middle of the page, there is a comment about Vice Chair Hasty sharing his concerns with donation boxes. The second sentence there says, she would like to see the same guidelines across the board.
Hey, that's not nice.
So I would imagine you would wanna change that pronoun.
It was the computer.
And then the last correction is on the following page, page thirty-three of sixty-one of the packet. Towards the bottom of the section about the C U P for permanent makeup, the sentence, Vice Chair Hasty made a motion, permanent makeup, the permanent and permanent makeup is misspelled.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right, I then move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. We'll move on to public hearing for item A, the state mandated update to accessory dwelling units.
Thank you, Chair. Before the Planning Commission this evening is a proposed update to the city's A D U ordinance. It's consistent with recent changes to state law and guidance from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, which we'll refer to as H C D from this point forward. A D U's are a type of dwelling unit that historically been known or referred to as things such as granny flats, in-law units, accessory apartments, and so forth. They're small detached or attached housing units with complete independent living facilities, meaning each unit will have its own restroom, shower, kitchen, facilities, and so forth. They can be either, or they may consist of, they may be attached to an existing dwelling unit, detached from an existing primary dwelling unit, or may consist of a repurposed living space within an existing home, garage, or accessory structure. The state legislature has long considered A D U's to be a valuable tool for addressing the state's housing crisis and providing for affordable housing throughout the state. To that end, the state's A D U laws have increasingly encouraged cities to basically review these types of proposals on an expedited basis. As of right now, the city is obligated to approve an A D U application through a ministerial process within sixty days of receiving a complete application. So there is a push to get these projects in place and approved as quickly as possible. We're prohibited from subjecting them to any sort of discretionary review or public hearing, which is why, for better or worse, the Planning Commission is never tasked with reviewing A D U applications. The city itself has routinely updated its municipal code to be consistent with the then-current state A D U legislation. The last update to our A D U ordinance was approved by the City Council after a recommendation from the Planning Commission in twenty twenty-three. Since that time, the H C D has released updated guidance on the implementation of state A D U law. And most recently, the legislature enacted S B four seven seven and S B at a one twelve eleven, sorry, both of which necessitated additional updates to the city's existing ordinance. So within your staff report, there's a table one, which outlines the proposed changes to the existing A D U ordinance to reflect, again, guidance from the H C D as well as recent changes in the state law. I can kinda give a quick summary of, I think, some of the key changes being made here. There's a clarification that came to the legislature that A D U's themselves may be created within a detached garage. It's one change. There's also changes within our code now to clarify the number of units that are allowed per lot. One of the more notable things here is that under the prior law, it specified that for existing multifamily developments, that you are obligated to allow two detached A D U units. But with the recent changes to state law, it now says, okay, well, for existing multifamily, you must allow up to eight detached A D U units. And then for a proposed multifamily development, you must allow two. So again, we're increasing to eight for a multifamily development that's already in existence. And then if someone approaches the building counter with plans or site plan for a multifamily development, they could go through and ministerially add two detached A D U's to that plan. The changes would clarify also that demolition of an uncovered parking space that's done in connection with the development of an A D U does not require the replacement of that parking. Previously, the law had said if you, you know, remove a covered parking space in connection with your development of A D U, say you're using a detached garage and creating an A D U, you would not have to then add an additional parking space, even if our city's residential code standard would suggest that that is required. So this is just one more step stating that, A, even if it's an uncovered spot, you're not gonna have to replace that when you put in an A D U. One step further even, the law now says that there's no off-street parking required for an A D U that's proposed with a permit application for a new single-family residence or a multifamily residential. So maybe a little bit of editorializing on my part, but, you know, since the inception of the state legislation that's trying to encourage these developments, you know, we started out with a very narrow range of discretion that we could exercise in terms of decisions we could make about how these structures would be developed in terms of maybe size or height or other development standards. And it would appear that with each new enactment from the state, that's being clawed back against. And so with parking in particular, with this change, there's almost no exception at this point to, to the general statement that if you're, Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, he sees this an application, but I would say nine times out of ten, you're not gonna have to provide parking for an A D U. There's just a lot of exceptions, including, you know, proximity to a transit stop, which Tom and I recently had a conversation about how that term's defined within the law. It's, you know, where there's other, whereas there's other aspects of the housing law that when they refer to major transit centers and so forth, you're looking at a pretty high volume of bus routes or major rail stations, which makes sort of infill more plausible. The loose definition of A D U law really comes down to almost just having a single route. It may only, a bus stop that may only have an hour of service a day or something like that. You know, that's, that's enough to say that parking's not necessitated. Another change you'll see is that previously, we had said that J A D U, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing on parking. It does specify that no replacement parking is required with the J A D U as well at this point. And a J A D U is almost a subcategory of A D U. It's a much smaller unit and it doesn't have to have its own restroom facilities per se, as long as there's a direct line between that unit and the home so that the resident has a connection to the unit to use those facilities. One other change you'll see here is that the H C D has pushed back on ordinances that would specify that J A D U's cannot be used as a short-term vacation rental-type use. The statute, you know, the state statute in this case has always said that the city's local ordinance can specify that A D U's must be rented for periods of thirty days or more, so it affects a ban on short-term rentals. Most cities have incorporated not only that provision, but also said, well, same thing for J A D U's, right? And which makes sense, J A D U's somewhat of a subset here. Well, the H C D recently has pushed back in comment letters to cities when it reviews these ordinances and said, you know, the state A D U law doesn't authorize you to restrict J A D U's to short, restrict the use of J A D U's as short-term rentals, which is somewhat interesting because obviously, the intent of all these laws is to provide long-term housing for folks, right? You, you would think that H C D would be opposed to a permissive use of J A D U's in a way that doesn't actually house someone in need of a home. But nonetheless, that's why that item is removed. But I would draw the attention of the Commissioner to the fact that, notwithstanding those comments, that does not change the police powers of the cities and our ability to control zoning. So notwithstanding the elimination of that provision within our A D U-specific ordinance, our code in general continues to prohibit all short-term vacation rentals, which would extend to J A D U's, because per our zoning code, we effectively define, you know, any sort of vacation rental or a short-term rental-type use to be equivalent to lodging or hotel and motel. And those uses will not be permitted in a residential zone. So you lose that in terms of the specificity here, but it doesn't really result in any sort of real impact in terms of how we would view an attempt to use a J A D U as a short-term rental. in terms of how we would view an attempt to use a JADU as a short-term rental. Yeah, so I think, I think those are sort of the key points here. Our practice has always been with this ordinance to closely follow the state ADU law and try to put together local provisions that would make it easy for someone to pick up our code and understand what is required and what's allowed. If an individual were forced just to pick up the state statute, it's a lot more confusing, at least in terms of the ease of access and probably understanding the, you know, how you're going to run through the gamut here and getting something developed. So, you know, we largely mirror and directly track the state law, but have tried to put it in a manner that's organized so that someone in the community trying to build one of these units understands what the standards are and how to apply to that permit. So I'll conclude with that, but if there are any questions, either Tom or I are here to try to help work through them.
How many applications are we seeing? I know there are two built in my neighborhood already.
Yeah. Probably three or four a month, something like that.
Oh, three or four a month?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's picking up. There's a lot more than there used to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, the only other question I have is, without reading through all this, most of our neighborhoods, say, you know, Carrier Row, we're zoned residential, right? So what are they, say I want to come in and I want to do, you know, multifamily, because there seems to be one right by me, you know, it's got multi with a, probably can do an ADU. So you, I know some of the law says that you can split lots. Can we, and we can't stop that, right?
Right. You know, that's.
So you literally, and I don't want to be doomsday here, but you could, you split my lot, put two multifamilies and two ADUs and two junior ADUs.
Yep.
You put.
No, I could.
That's, that's.
I'm being extreme here.
So, so we could rehash that conversation, but that relates to SB nine, which provided for urban land, lands.
Oh, I know.
And also the development of multifamily.
I could put two duplexes.
Residences, yeah.
Two ADUs and two junior ADUs.
So there are definitely.
And no parking.
Yeah, there's definitely creative ways.
Thanks, California. I mean, I all want, I want people to live in homes, but that's just, some developer is going to say, I want to do that. It's sad. I'm just, that's my editorial, sorry. But I know what we're doing here and I appreciate you guys knowing what the standards of the, of the community are and trying to protect us the best we can, but we also have to be, you know, in compliance with the law. So until the law changes, hopefully.
I have several questions. I hope they'll go quickly. The first one is, if there is an existing house that's chopped up into, say, three apartments, and it was, it's very clear from the outside that it used to be a single-family home, do those apartments, are those considered ADUs?
So I think you would have to look at it on a case-by-case basis, but my general point of departure on that is that that's likely to be considered an existing multifamily development for purposes of ADU law.
Probably whether it was permitted or not.
Are there any, any filing fees that, that developers have to use to do a permit?
For an ADU?
Yeah.
It's other than regular permit fees.
Permit fees.
Yeah, but not a special ADU or anything like that.
Okay. And then the last area that I wanted to talk about a little bit was the parking lots and demolishing parking lots. In Los Angeles, they are already demolishing entire parking lots of, you know, thirty to fifty spaces and putting ADUs on those. And living in Midtown myself personally, but also for all the tenants that live there, it, I believe it would be a great concern to the community if, say, you know, there's fifty parking spaces allowed and then all of a sudden, all of those were converted. Los Alamos has done an excellent job with trying to get as much density parking as possible. But I wanted to find out, is there any type of public meeting that we could go to or any kind of recourse that the citizens would have or the traffic commission would have if, if there is something that is a huge, huge development that someone wants to convert the parking lots or the parking spaces or the garages?
So I just want some clarification. There's a couple things here. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we're in either, or in Tom or Michael here. So let's say you have a, in Midtown apartment complex with uncovered or covered part, let's just say it's uncovered parking lot, a lot of apartment conflict in the back. Has uncovered parking lot, right? Or to the new law here, you could take those parking spaces and push ADU into them. We have no recourse on that. They do not require parking spaces. Like if you were going to put a, tear it down and put a new apartment in, that's one. The second one here is, like, let's say you're taking a parking space from a shopping center, all right? That is a different story in terms of that is going through a much more larger. We did this here in Los Alamos and most cities are doing that. It's through the arena, right? Regional housing needs assessment numbers and stuff. And so, yeah, there are some cities out there that are converting warehouse space, converting parking spots in shopping centers to housing, right? And yeah, that's going to get rid of parking spaces. So again, the overlying scope of this is the state of California is mandating this on counties, cities, et cetera. So the best course of action is to talk to your elected officials at the state level.
And I do want to applaud the city for, you really drafted a beautiful ordinance here to parallel the state statutes. I think I'm, I'm not opining on that part of it, and you guys are just doing what you have to do. And I think it's laid out beautifully. And if I was someone that wanted to put in one of these units, I think looking at the muni code would be pretty, pretty easy. Follow-up question to that. So if existing tenants have parking spaces and those parking spaces are now going to be used for ADUs, the existing tenants don't have any, any rights or any say in losing their existing parking spaces. Is that true as well?
I suppose that would come down to whatever private agreement they have with the landlord in terms of if the space has been guaranteed with that.
So if it's, if it's written in a signed lease agreement, then that would be a legal right, contractually?
I would expect it.
Okay, okay. And then the last question is, do you know, under the housing code, if property owners have any type of responsibility to notify tenants that something like this is happening?
If they're intending to convert ADUs within.
Yes.
I'm not aware of any sort of notification that would be required.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Could I make one quick clarification on that, on one of those? With your example of an apartment building, say there's twelve units and there's twelve spots. When that was built, obviously it was permitted, it was zoned for there. There were requirements put in place for twelve spots. Are you saying that that goes out the window? And basically that owner now can say, you know, basically they, they agreed to it when we gave him the permit originally, but since that's square footage on the ground, he can put.
ADUs.
ADUs.
For the outdoors.
Outdoor unco, yeah.
For the covered ones, it's, you get up to twenty-five percent.
Cent, okay.
Change into ADU.
That puts all those cars on the street with more people with cars.
And I'm assuming as a follow-up to your question, with, like, if you have a parking spot in your lease, well, when you're up for renewal, your parking spot's no longer going to be in the lease, I would assume, if they want to.
Yeah, they, they may change the lease. I mean, just as an example, there is a large development which has ninety single garages and ninety apartments. That's just a small, small fraction of one street. So would that mean then that the developer could put in ninety ADUs? Could convert each one of those garages?
They're covered, so twenty-five percent, right?
Twenty-five percent of them, but still.
That's a lot.
That's a lot, yeah, for, for one apartment building.
With no parking.
Yeah.
No additional parking.
Yeah, okay.
I, I have a question. Is there a limit? Because these ADUs are really not that big, even the bigger ones. Is there a limit to the number of people that can live in an ADU? Or can you just bring all ten kids and move in?
Yeah, you could.
You can?
Yeah.
Okay.
There aren't some codes with living space for square foot for people? I mean, we do it for animals.
Not.
You can only have so many cats.
Not a city code. There might be some kind of.
Maybe county code or health code, okay. Probably have to go deeper, yeah.
What's the average time from when they apply for permits to getting approved to it being built?
Well, we have ten business days to approve their, a plan that works for our code. And if they have mistakes or something in the plans, then we have another five business days. But to build it, that's up to the developer. And there are some that were approved two or three years ago that are still not built yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think in the future, though, there's going to be some that get approved and you're going to drop prefabs right there. I mean, they're already built.
Yeah, I'm surprised that there's not many.
More of those, yeah.
We haven't had any in this town.
Really? Not yet?
Well, one, one.
Okay.
We had one.
I want to point out that because we're Los Alamos, what Tom said, the timeline is super fast.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we are obligated for sixty days.
Right.
But we're just Los Alamos, which is quicker.
Yeah, I'd say that the building permits, I believe, expire on a hundred and eighty days typically. So if someone doesn't construct for a hundred and eighty days, they would have to either seek an extension or let it lapse and then come back. But maybe not a huge consequence to letting it last, because once they submit a complete plan, basically it's a ministerial or the counter approval again, you know.
Any more questions? Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing. Seeing nobody here to speak on this matter, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Let's see, what do we need? We're just accepting the report and we're moving it there?
No, there's a.
Does it say it?
Exhibit A is the ordinance, but I mean, I think we just started sending it to the.
The staff's recommendation would be to adopt Resolution Number twenty-two-five dash zero-five, which recommends city council approval of the ordinance updating the ADU provisions of the Los Alamos municipal code.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to accept the Resolution twenty-two-five with the recommendation to the council. Is that about close enough?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, do we have any staff reports?
Thank you, Ron, and thank you, Chair, members of our Planning Commission. I just have a few items to present, our Knights on Pine event. That's our last series, our last event of the three-month series, is concluding on October ninth. It's a Thursday, so I invite you to come out and participate, attend. It's from six-thirty to eight PM. It'll have the same structure as we've had in the last two with a live concert. It'll be an eighties tribute band to kind of wrap it up. And then we'll have various vendors and entertainment, food options for families that come out and support. And then I wanted to address, or at least share, more than anything, some comments that were posted on the city of Los Alamos Facebook account. And this is in relation to last month's report on the public hearing notice for the CDBG process. And it's just comments shared about ideas or input, rather, that was being solicited for the meeting. And it was in favor of more parks. It was in favor of trees throughout the city. And then community garden. So just sharing that to you since you were all present at that last meeting. So I thought it would be value, valuable information to share. So that's all I have.
I got a few items, Chair. As always, I feel like I'm repeating it. Please stay connected to the city of Los Alamos. We have several ways. We have a newspaper, The Local Loop. We have a website. We have social media. Occasionally, we court, we do door hangers. We have an e-newsletter that's sent out each week. We have a lot of information. Round out twenty-two-five. We're going to be busy. We are, the city as a team, especially us in Development Services, we are rounding out, trying to finish CIP projects. We got another park project online, Surofnumis Park. We did a groundbreaking a week or two ago. We're trying to get that done by December. We have a dog park that'd be built at a little park that we're trying to get done before December. We have Knights on Pine. Recreation Community Services has their trunk or treat coming up. They have a Halloween decorating contest coming up, of course, in December. We're getting into Winter Wonderland. So again, you see the six-oh-five project freeway entrances coming up here, and OC Sands coming as well, project, right? And so again, stay connected to the city. We pushed out information on that. And so you are aware of what's going on. That is it from us. Thank you.
Okay. I have a question. Do we have an update on the Lamson project? What's going on there?
The, they're saying they're close on getting a deal with the Rossmore Los Alamos sewer district for connecting there. And then the base is allowing them to discharge water from the water, the WQMP, which is the wastewater, I mean, what am I trying to say?
Water quality.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, it's water that lands on the land and then pours off. That they're maybe going to allow it on the base.
Okay.
I mean, go through the base, through a pipe onto some other property. So they're, they're, they're almost worked it out, so.
So when you say work it out, it's, it's going to go down Lamson then, the sewer?
Probably.
Okay, so we're going to pay for it.
That's if all is true. There will be a pipe and there will be built, a construction down Lamson for a while, yeah. So, and it'll be built about six feet away from the existing sewer, so.
All right, does anybody else have any?
Do you have some?
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to report out on a few of the community events that I attended since the last meeting. So on September the fifth, I went to the JFTB Change of Command Ceremony. And those of you, I don't know if anyone else has been to one of those, it was incredibly inspiring to be on the base, to support our local base, and to have all of the pageantry. And I know there were a lot of city officials there, so it was really fun and educational to be there with everyone. On the weekend of the thirteenth, participated and served Los Al. And again, that's something that really is a lot of fun. The event has grown quite a bit, and the Rec and Community Services has done a great job. They, they hand out T-shirts. They give you free Nick's breakfast burritos. They have a big picture at, at the, a group picture at the, at the start of it. And I was fortunate enough to work and help out the museum, so it was really fun to do that hands-on. And then later that day, went to celebrate Los Al and the Veterans Recognition Ceremony as well. And I am very impressed by all of that. It just seems like it grows every year, gets better and better. And all of the staff there, including the Development Services staff that were there, everybody did a great job. And then lastly, on the fifteenth, I went to the Labyrinth at Park ribbon-cutting ceremony. And given that that's right in my community, it was really wonderful to see all of the kids playing. And there were a lot of city staff there and community members as well. And that was just a lot of fun. And this is the second park that we've renovated, and it's just beautiful work that's done. It really is. So thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you. I want to give a shout. I don't know if you know, but Irving here manages those projects for us. So he did Sturgis Park, he did Labyrinth Park, and he's heading up Surofnumis Park as well. So kudos to him.
I wanted to reiterate that as well. The parks are coming out really nice. I do playgrounds at my work too, so it's, it's kind of a fun project because it's, it's very rewarding. Real quick, it wasn't a city event, but I did hear about it here, the American Legion Car Show. You guys supported that, I think, in, in getting the word out there, and it was very successful. They raised a lot of money for the, for the American Legion, and it was a great little car show, and it was a good little night, so just wanted to say that.
Can I beg you back off that this Sunday? They're unveiling the mural.
Oh, the mural.
I was wondering. I drive by that on the way home from the gym all the time.
Yeah, they, they showed us parts of it, and it was, it's amazing. It's, it's very, very nice.
Starts out one PM this Sunday.
Okay, nice.
I went to celebrate Los Al. I went to celebrate Los Al. It was good. I took my kids. They really liked the carnival rides. And you know what? The food was really good. So you did a good job. Everybody was happy.
Yeah, again, Irving and the Economic Development Division leaned that for our country. You can tell I keep them busy.
Yeah.
It came out good.
All right, if there's nothing else, we adjourn the meeting.